Good afternoon, everyone. On the occasion of this eighty-ninth annual general meeting of the Bank for International Settlements, it gives me a great pleasure to welcome all of you to this session entitled "Regulatory Convergence: Water, Names in Pieces." And to discuss this very relevant topic, we have here today a group of distinguished panelists with diverse experiences. Hopefully, that will allow us to approach this matter from different perspectives and also to have a rich and comprehensive exchange of views. So today's session will be structured as follows. We'll have like three, up to three, brief rounds of interventions by the panelists, and between each of the rounds, we'll ask you questions. So please try to connect your smartphone to the Wi-Fi so that you can participate in the polls that we are going to organize after each of the rounds of intervention by the panelists. Let me turn to the topic of this panel for a few minutes. I think we all agree that actions taken by standard-setting bodies and financial authorities have strengthened the global financial system in the aftermath of the great financial crisis. There are, however, signs of market fragmentation in certain aspects of financial markets which may undermine, to some extent, the effectiveness of these reforms. Indeed, one of the objectives of international standards is to promote a global-level playing field that could facilitate cross-border financial transactions and efficient functioning of internationally active firms. The limited integration of international markets responds to a number of causes relating to the structural singularities or specificities of national financial systems. Arguably, regulatory divergences may actually exacerbate fragmentation, but at the same time, they could also be the consequence of the need to adjust regulation to the relevant singularities of each jurisdiction to achieve domestic policy objectives. So in fact, some regulatory specificities might contribute to increase the resilience of national financial systems. Yet I think there is a merit in collectively discussing ways to improve the relevant regulatory frameworks in order to help strike the right balance between preserving financial stability in our jurisdictions and the minimization of market fragmentation. In that regard, an important debate today, and sure it's going to be raised in this discussion, is about how to mitigate excessive reinforcing in host jurisdiction of the local subsidiaries of internationally active firms. Against this background, the Japanese G20 presidency has considered the issue of market fragmentation as a policy priority. As we speak, as you all know, the G20 leaders are meeting in Osaka in Japan to discuss this, among other matters. Accordingly, the Financial Stability Board and also IOSCO have explored issues around regulatory-driven market fragmentation and tools to address them. Those tools include measures to increase cross-border communication and information sharing among authorities, and also ways to facilitate a deference process through different mechanisms such as passporting or mutual recognition. Chief within these proposed initiatives is to pursue a complete, timely, and consistent implementation of the international regulatory reforms. The work currently undertaken by international organizations to regularly assess the adoption of international standards in the member jurisdictions becomes most relevant to achieving that objective. The R-CAPS conducted by the Basel Committee on Banking Supervision are one good example of the work conducted at international level to monitor the domestic implementation of these reforms. Nevertheless, while in necessary condition, it seems that the adequate implementation of international standards may not be sufficient to ensure effective regulatory harmonization. The Financial Stability Institute has, in the last couple of years, produced several studies documenting how prudential regimes can actually diverge as a consequence of the different approaches followed on issues for which international standards do not yet exist or are insufficiently prescriptive. And this is certainly the case of insurance regulation for which international capital standards are still under development. But even in the field of banking regulation, where the adoption of Basel III has been a great, great leap forward, there is still room for divergence in national prudential regimes. So let's take minimum capital requirements as an example. The new framework clearly defines eligibility criteria for the different components of regulatory capital and harmonizes regulatory deductions. Yet capital, as we all know, is at the end of the day the difference between the value of assets and liabilities. And this means that if there is insufficient convergence on asset valuation practices, then capital measurement will diverge, thus compromising the comparability of solvency indicators across jurisdictions. Indeed, there are wide discrepancies in how assets are valued across countries. This is not only the consequence of still heterogeneous accounting standards, but also of diverging prudential requirements, such as those related to the identification and measurement of nonperforming exposures and corresponding loan loss provisioning practices. Similarly, while minimum pillar-one capital ratios are clearly specified in the standards, actual capital requirements are affected as well by pillar-two capital add-ons or stress testing exercises, which are determined in each jurisdictions typically following relatively divergent practices. So all these differences could well be justified as a reflection of the specific needs and policy priorities in each of the various jurisdictions. As a consequence, it is a complex task to determine the optimal degree of regulatory convergence, which will be consistent with the accomplishment of legitimate domestic objectives while minimizing unintended fragmentation. In any case, a relevant issue for discussion is whether there could possibly be scope for additional policy work at international level that could provide some guidance on high-level issues currently covered by relatively disparate approaches. And I am looking forward to listening to what our panelists will have to say about this and other related issues. So I will stop here and introduce our panelists. So we'll do so in alphabetical order. We start from the left to the right. First, we have Paul Andries. I think it's the second time Paul participates in this regulatory session in the AGM, so thank you very much for coming back, Paul. Then Jaime Caruana, of course, a very, very familiar face to all of us in this room. He's currently the board member of Banco Bilbao Vizcaya Argentaria, but before that, from 2010, 2017, he was the general manager of the Bank for International Settlements. It was a great honor and pleasure, Jaime, to have you back here in this place, which has been your home for so many productive years. So next is Bill Coin, Secretary General of the Basel Committee on Banking Supervision. I understand, Bill, that this is just your last official act as a Secretary General of the BCBA, so thank you very, very much for being with us today. On the right, Jonathan Dixon, Secretary General of International Association Insurance Supervisors. I think it's the third time you are in this session, so looking forward to your perspective on very important issues also for the insurance regulatory community. Also, of course, a great pleasure to have as well Wilson Irving. Wilson is in the chief executive office of Credito Suiz. He's a very important, very active, and very, how to say, provoking, actually, actor in the ongoing debate on regulatory fragmentations. I think we are very fortunate to have him with us today as well. And of course, last but by no means least, we have Elisa Ferreira, Deputy Governor, Banco de Portugal, an extremely important personality who has space the process of the construction and development of the European Banking Union. So thank you very much for being with us here today as well. So let's now go directly to the first round of interventions, which is pretty much motivated by this discussion, whether actually the current degree that we observe in terms of regulatory convergence or the lack of sufficient regulatory convergence is actually the cost of regulatory fragmentation or it could actually be a consequence of that we don't yet have actually integrated global financial system. But having said this, I would like to ask you, what is your view? How we could actually achieve a higher degree of regulatory convergence? What are the main obstacles? How could we address those obstacles in an effective way? Paul, your first.
Well, thanks very much, Fernando, and it's a pleasure to be here again for my second time. So welcome to everyone in the room. I think, and let me say thanks at the beginning for mentioning our market fragmentation report. We did spend a great deal of time putting that together, not only on behalf of IOSCO, but frankly, in response to the G20 request that we spend some time and focus on these issues around market fragmentation. So we were able actually to produce something in a fairly short period of time, but that was only the first chapter, and there's still much work yet to be done. And I'll spend a moment on that just in a moment. But I think to get to the heart of the question that you asked, which is, why isn't there more regulatory convergence and what are the main obstacles? For me, and I would say in my position and what I've seen, is it really, there are many reasons, but I would say it boils down to two primary reasons. The first is what I would call a lack of political will or the willingness to take political risk. And the second is really a lack of trust. And in many respects, those two things, you might argue, are mirror images of the same fundamental issue, which is, do regulators have confidence that their fellow regulator will regulate like they regulate? And the reason I say that political will is probably the first reason for this is because each of us, in our own jurisdictions, responds to policymakers within our own jurisdictions. So after the financial crisis, when markets were deteriorating, investors were losing money, things were imploding, what did policymakers do? Policymakers looked to their regulators, they looked to their prudential overseers, and said, what went wrong? Where were you when these things were happening, and why didn't you stop it? So imagine had the response of those regulators and prudential supervisors been, well, we were relying on what another regulator was doing in some far-off land because they were regulating our banks, our intermediaries, our markets. Politically, that will never fly. And so one of the reasons why regulators are hesitant to give up any authority or jurisdiction is precisely because of that political risk. But at the same time, I say trust is also another critical factor here. And you have to have confidence that your colleagues in another part of the world are going to do what you expect them to do. That sounds easy, but after the financial crisis, and frankly, we're still rebuilding that trust in many, many ways, that's where we need to be in terms of increasing regulatory convergence. I do think we're starting to see that. I think our market fragmentation paper that we issued laid out, as Fernando referred to, a few areas where I think we can contribute to this discussion at IOSCO, one of which is increasing, frankly, mutual understanding, how different jurisdictional frameworks work, why the approach they take is actually effective. Sounds simple, but you cannot underestimate the lack of understanding between regulators around the world. At the same time, having faith and trust in the process of how you go about deferring to a fellow regulator is crucial. And this is where this idea of how do we go about making deference decisions? What are the people issues? What are the process issues? What are the technology issues? These are areas we're beginning to explore as well, and our board will come to some decision, we hope, on this later this year in terms of how we're going to take these issues forward. So let me stop there in the first go-around, but I guess the message I leave with you is lack of trust, lack of political will.
Many thanks, Paul. Jaime?
Well, thank you very much. Let me start by saying that it's a real pleasure for me to be here. It's not the first time that I sit here, but I must say that this is the first time that I do it with a different hat, and the only thing I would say is that changing hat has not changed my mind in many of the issues that we are going to discuss, and I continue to think basically the same, although I must say also that I'm learning a lot, and I think that's good. But in any case, I think it's very good that we have the opportunity to discuss this very important issue, and I am very glad that it is done here at the BIS, that has devoted the last ninety years, almost ninety years, to increase the cooperation among central bankers and supervisors. So it's a real pleasure for me to be here. And welcome the initiative of the G20 that has made the production of two very good reports, I think the IOSCO report, which is excellent, and the FSB report also, which are a very good basis for our discussion. Both your introduction and these reports, I think, make clear that these issues of divergence is very complex and that there are good reasons for, in some cases, to have some divergence. In some cases, the reason is just because the systems are different and is a consequence and not the origin of the differences. But I'm going to argue that the differences are too big and that needs to be narrowed down, although I know that there have been enormous efforts by the regulators to do so. I think still more could be done, and we should not forget that even though in some cases it could be argued that with some differences you could increase financial stability in the sense that could limit contagions and spillovers, at the same time, you can also create financial stability risks. If you constrain efficiency, if you constrain risk management, this is not properly done. Because of the constraints, you can end up, particularly in the long run, with misallocations, and you can end up by increasing financial risks. So I think it's a difficult balance, and I think this is the basis that we should have for our discussion. It's interesting because in the FSB paper, there is one additional reason that they mention why regulations could be different, and this is because regulations would need to accommodate different business models in the industry. And I like this argument. I think there are different business models in the industry, and it's good to have different business models, different time horizons, different risk management system. I think this adds stability, and I think this is the reason why I think we should go with regulation that could accommodate this kind of regulations, this kind of different business models. One of the cases is the Spanish banking system. The Spanish banking system in their expansion have followed a very decentralized business model, is based on subsidiaries that are independent from the parent company in the sense that they don't get basically no cross-subsidy, they are funded locally, they are basically local banks. So it's more than international, it's a multi-local banks. And this is an approach for a specific kind of business, which is the retail business of the Spanish banks. I wouldn't say, and I certainly would not argue that this is a business model for anyone, but it has been a business model that has worked efficiently and that has proved quite robust in terms of crisis, even in crisis on the origin country, in Spain, or in the host country in any other countries. But the point I want to make, and I have only thirty seconds to make it, is that really, even in this case, even in this kind of models, even in this kind of models that probably is better adapted to different kinds of regulations, I think there is too much divergence in regulation and an additional effort could be made. And I could make a lot of examples that are mentioned in these papers. So the differences in implementation of international standards is quite significant, and there has been such an overhaul of regulation that it makes sense, but this is quite big and more efforts need to be done. And with the small, because of the different regulations of home and host countries, it is very easy to enter into extraterritoriality issues, and perhaps we can have the time for that. But this is also very important, and I could show some examples in which by very simple regulations in the home country, you could enter into extraterritoriality. Although I must say that with good faith and collaboration, some of them have been able to be solved, and this is something that, again, goes in the direction of continuing these significant efforts that already have been done. And I will stop here. I thought it was, five minutes were larger. It was larger when I was here, I can tell you.
These have changed, and we'll go next, please.
Thank you, Fernando. Good afternoon. I've had the pleasure of sitting here on several occasions to talk about the work of the Basel Committee, and for the last two years, I've had the, this year and the last, the real distinct pleasure of not saying where we are, where do we stand with Basel III. So the world has moved on, the Basel Committee has moved on, thankfully. I'm going to take a far more positive, far more rosy approach because in the narrow world of bank supervision and regulation, I think we've done really well, and I don't think the regulatory convergence or divergence really is too much of an issue, and I'll explain why. Keep in mind, 2017, that was the last phase of all the revisions to the global Basel Framework that we made, including the output floor. And so there's a raft of revisions that will come into effect, not until 2022. And if you think about the timing of that, forgive me if you've heard me say this before, but the timing of it was really important because it took a little bit longer than we had expected, but it was during a period where everyone said it'll never get done. We've got a new administration in the US. Clearly, the US, one of the biggest members on the Basel Committee, is moving in another direction away from these large global international standards. It nevertheless got done, and so I'm not concerned about, so from the policy side, from the regulatory side, the Basel Committee is finished. We've done what we need to do. There really is nothing more that needs to be done in a policy, from a policy perspective, except implement the rules, and that is concerning. I think Paul is right when he talked about the political will. I do see there's less of a sense of urgency, and I think that has, in some cases, slowed the implementation of the framework. But I still think, by and large, we've done very well. We've got a global framework of minimum standards, and I always go out of my way to say minimum standards. I'm sure at some point later on in this discussion, we'll talk about gold plating. But what we've put out, minimum standards, and it's still very early in the game. We've done, from the Basel Committee perspective, we've done what needs to be done. The hard work, though, continues at the national, the jurisdictional level. All the work to, all the work that we've done to consult, to conduct quantitative impact studies, the Basel Committee has done that, but now that same process is unfolding in the twenty-seven jurisdictions that comprise the Basel Committee, and that's a pretty heavy process. So a lot of the actual rule-writing or the legislative work, that's a work in progress. Why am I concerned about that? Well, we have seen jurisdictions, you know, I mentioned there is a clear lack of urgency, the sense of urgency isn't what it was clearly during the height of the crisis. There is a sense of selective amnesia about the lessons learned from the crisis. There's some short terms of myopia that I think has become part of the process, and that's not helpful. I think it's important to look at these, the framework, from a long-term perspective. And I'm not so sure that that's being done. So I do have some concerns about, Fernando, in his opening remarks, mentioned full, timely, consistent implementation. I do have some concerns whether or not the minimum requirements, and it's important to point out, the minimum requirements are not, it's not the target level, it's not the right number, it's the bare minimum. Any regulation below that level, in our view, is unsafe and unsound. Something above that level, that, you know, we can have a discussion about gold plating. I like to call it armor plating. You're really armor plating your banks and your financial system to withstand, to become more resilient. One last thing, just to provide perspective, it is important, convergence is important, and that's something that pervades the discussion of the Basel Committee when we develop the rules. But financial services, it's not the only industry that, where there is divergence from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. Manufacturing, I mean, any activity that's global, there's going to be some divergence. Some jurisdictions have a notably different risk appetite than others. There are different competition laws, different bankruptcy-insolvency regimes. I think from our perspective, we've actually done very well. I'll leave you with one last anecdote. I was speaking with a chief risk officer of a globally systemically important bank last month, a couple months ago. He said, from their perspective, ninety-five percent, there is ninety-five percent convergence for the global rules. They've got about five, he would assess that it's five percent of the rules to which they're subject, there is divergence. I think from that perspective, I think we've done pretty well. I've gone over. I apologize, Fernando. Over to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Jonathan, go next.
Thanks, and very good to be here at this forum again. Thanks very much. So I agree a lot with what's been said already, so maybe I'll respond a little bit by way of an example for the IIS because this issue is a very live one within the IIS. Fernando, you mentioned it, a lot has been done in terms of the post-crisis reforms to build trust and financial integration. We're not quite there yet. We are still working on our post-crisis reforms, but we are almost there. In particular, in November this year, the idea is to adopt, first of all, a holistic framework for mitigating systemic risk in the insurance sector, and secondly, to finalize what we call COMFRAIM, which is, for the first time, a common framework for the supervision of internationally active insurance groups. So for the first time, a global framework for supervision of global insurance groups, and this includes an insurance capital standard, ICS. This is a global risk-based standard, one standard that will apply with the ultimate goal, in a sense, being complete regulatory convergence. This has, however, not been an easy task. Reference was made to differences in business models, and I think if you look at insurance business models compared to banking, perhaps the differences are almost twofold in terms of the varieties of the types of business. But at the same time, I think it's fair to say that the alternative is probably truly suboptimal in terms of what we see as signs of markets fragmented along jurisdictional lines. So for example, examples of European insurance groups selling off US life business, citing concerns about unlevel playing fields, pointing to differences in national regulations. Of bigger concern is that this may also have financial stability implications, particularly as the fact that in the absence of a common language to understand the solvency position of global insurance groups, it's very difficult to have effective global supervision of these groups. So that's why we're pursuing convergence, but the question asked about obstacles, and there certainly are obstacles. I mean, one in particular, as we know, is that the US has stated that they will be developing an aggregation method, which is an alternative to the consolidated group-wide approach of ICS, and they are doing this because of some of the reasons that have been mentioned. Firstly, differences in insurance business models and national policy mandates, particularly recognizing differences in social security coverage in the US. Also, differences in regulatory powers, given that there are not consolidated group-wise Also differences in regulatory powers, given that there are not consolidated group-wide powers in the US insurance regulatory system. So those are the types of obstacles we face. The question says what, how do we respond? And I think the first way is as per the FSB report, is as a standard-setting body having explicit discussions, in fact, before we've even finalized the standard, about the potential trade-offs between the benefits of regulatory convergence, on the one hand, and the, and the need, on the other hand, for flexibility to tailor a domestic regulatory framework. So it's really about achieving the right balance. We've allowed ourselves five years for this exercise during what we call a monitoring period for the ICS. But by the end of the monitoring period, the IIS itself aims to assess whether the aggregation method provides comparable outcomes to the ICS. And if so, it will be considered outcome equivalent. So in a way, a deference being looked at by the standard-setting body itself. And this will allow us to do a couple of things. As I said, first, consideration of possible market fragmentation issues before the standard is finalized. Secondly, to make sure that we have proper guidance on the interpretation of ICS before it is implemented, which reduce, which hopefully should reduce implementation issues post, post-finalization. But at the very least, it will provide a common language to deal with, hopefully address some of the stability concerns. So the goal remains convergence, but I think in terms of a way to address it, it does need to be done on a step-by-step, step-by-step basis, as has been, has been referenced. First, building understanding of respective systems, and then building trust in the respective systems and building a system of deference. And maybe a last point, this is talking about capital, but if we're talking about future problems and we can come back to it, I think the changes in technology are really going to be the obstacles to regulatory convergence going forward.
Very good, thank you. Thank you very much. Jonathan, Elson, go next.
Thanks Fernando, and thanks for the opportunity to be here with all of you today. I'm going to take the topic of fragmentation and consistency and divergence back to the banking sector. In the derivative world, it's really about convergence and recognition, but in the, in the prudential sector, it's, I think, a fundamentally different issue. I think Bill made some important comments about how much progress we've made in the core reforms, and in fact, how truly aligned many of them have been in terms of building tier-one capital. We've built tier-one capital for the Group One banks. It's up about $2 trillion since 2011, so almost doubled in terms of ratio. With the Basel III reforms, it's better quality. Liquidity buffers are in the same kind of order of magnitude, it's in the trillions for those banks. If you look at the issue of too big to fail, if that huge amount of extra capital liquidity is not enough, the G-SIBs alone are now at about $1.5 trillion of non-concerned resources on top of that. So if you, if you look at those resources in the context of the failings of even the stupidest bank of 2008, and people made a pretty good run at stupidity in 2008, if you assume no benefits from better supervision or any of the other conduct rules, these kind of resources are ample to solve those economic problems. And that's been a very hard one, and I think very consistent fight. And I think the official sector deserves a lot of credit for organizing a consistent move on that. So we have, we have a major accomplishment and a major consistency, but I want to turn now to what I would call a regulatory tragedy that is in progress. It's a tragedy of the commons. In my view, it is dire and it's getting worse. We are seeing a lot of prisoner's dilemma-type behavior by jurisdictions to trap capital and liquidity. That's making banking for international groups, particularly ones that aren't organized in the way that BBVA is organized, but probably the majority of international banks are organized in a more centralized format, at least historically. It's making those institutions considerably more brittle and balkanized than they, than they need to be. We've done some work that estimates that the failure risk from a balkanized world is between five and 15 times higher than if you had a free-flowing capital world. That's a regulatory own goal. There are ways around it, but it's, in a sense, it's the equivalent of taking some of those major resource accomplishments that we've had, taking hundreds of billions of dollars' worth of capital, putting it over here and setting fire to it. Let me give a few specific examples. In the US, the main foreign-owned capital markets banks are 50 to 70% smaller because of these pressures than eight years ago, while the domestic rivals are up 25%. Europe, despite some of the progress on banking union, has less banking union than they did 10 years ago, if you look at things like cross-border flows, cross-border stocks or M&amp;A. There were something like 100 cross-border deals a year in the early 2000s, and now there's maybe 20 cross-border deals, and they're relatively small. Situation in the eurozone is serious to the point where Mario Draghi has described it as a threat to eurozone monetary policy. He notes that, for example, when the US moved from state banking to national banking and built a deeper capital markets component, they now have a system that absorbs about 70% of real economy shocks, where in Europe, it's about 25%. And in some countries, I believe, in countries like Italy, you have a financial sector that in some cases doesn't absorb any shocks and may, and at times amplifies them. If you look at that in context, you think about the pressures in Italy, GDP is still 10% smaller than 2011. I'm actually surprised their politics aren't more radical than they are today. And imagine if you had a financial sector that was better at absorbing shocks. If you had absorbed 70% of that, the shocks of 2008 and 2012, and were seeing more rebound, how much different that would be for the Italian people, for the politics of Europe, all those sorts of things. So I do think this is a terribly important problem that we do need to address, and we're going to need all of your help to do it. I don't have a lot of time to talk about Brexit, but let me just summarize, I don't think that's going to help. You're separating the biggest financial center from the main economic zone in Europe. So I think that'll be somewhat stressful. I'll talk a little bit about, I think, some ways forward in the next intervention, but I do think this is a very serious issue where we're going to need a lot of help from all of you to think about how we mitigate, how we stop this tragedy before our protagonist gets killed. We want to make sure there's a happy ending to this play, not a sad ending. I think that's very doable with some of the leadership of people in this room and elsewhere. But it's going to require some effort to do so.
Thanks, Wilson. Elisa, now.
Thank you very much for, for this invitation and for bringing this topic to discussion because it's absolutely major. I would just like to, speaking in last place, I'll just to stress two or three aspects that already some of them have been mentioned by colleagues that spoke before. I think, of course, we don't have to campaign in relation to how important it is to, to avoid market fragmentation, how to increase transparency, how to increase the level playing field, particularly in a sector that is global by nature. Having said this, when we are setting regulation, we have got to be aware, and here I'm trying to answer a bit what Polandres put as lack of political will and lack of trust. So why do we have lack of political will, why do we have lack of trust? And I think we have got to be more aware than we have been until now, that when we set regulation, we are not setting a standard that fits everybody the same. And this, we have got to be aware of it. So what we select as the level playing field, as the standard, will have a different impact, a symmetric impact according to the bank business model, according to the financial structure of each jurisdiction, and we have got to be aware of this when we set it. So on the other hand, what is optimal in terms of financial institution may be not optimal for the jurisdiction where it operates. And we cannot forget also that financial stability is still a country-specific kind of responsibility, and that explains a lot of things. So having said this, I think there are certain, and I'm trying to answer positively to the, to the request, I think we have done an incredible work. I agree with what has been said in that sense. I think now we should be able to fine-tune it. But nevertheless, if I go into what would be the characteristics to reinforce trust, I think one of them is to, to, to have long-term provizibility of what we are doing and keep the promises that we make. We have several promises and said, for instance, in banking union that then are interrupted, and what was done in the beginning cannot be finished because in the meantime, the political will vanished. The second thing is that it has got to be principle-driven. People have got to understand what is the point of it. And these principles have got to have a public good character, because it cannot be just because it's interesty for, for the institutional, for the business. Also, I think it has got to be proportional. So proportionality is, is a very important element. And the other element is the need that there is awareness by the standard setters of the different impacts. So more and more, I think we should precede the standard-setting by an impact analysis that puts us into a framework where we can expect what will be the consequence of what, of what we are deciding. So in a nutshell, when we decide if we are looking at NPLs, as you mentioned Fernando, or if, if we are looking at valuation of L2 or L3, we are making a choice. When we are looking and deciding that resolution is based on Emrel in Europe or Tilak in the United States with FDIC, we are making choices. And these choices are not neutral at all. And when you try to implement the regulation and legislation, then all these impacts come forward, and it's natural that, that there are different reactions and different strategies vis-à-vis a standard that is not neutral, that is not the same, or at least being the same causes a lot of asymmetric impacts. And we have got to be aware of that if we want things to evolve in a, in a calm and reasonable way, and aiming at trust will come back in relation to the, to what we have done. Thank you.
Any thanks, Elisa, and many thanks to the rest of the speakers. Very interesting first round of interventions. I think that you have, you have heard two different nuances in terms of the assessment of the current situation as, as respects to a degree of international regulatory convergence. Also, you have basically concorded with the idea that something else would actually be done. We're talking about, for instance, implementation. We've been talking about taking into account fragmentation when developing standards, which I think is an important element, element here. We'll come back to those issues later, certainly about the issue of political wills, about this type of non-economic type of, you know, resistance actually to achieve additional convergence, an important, it's an important matter. But it's also true, it's difficult actually to distinguish this political will or lack of trust with some substantive elements like, you know, different business models, different needs, different political objectives, policy objectives in different jurisdictions. We'll go back, we'll go back to this in a minute, but let me just now ask the audience the first question we want to put forward, which will appear on the screen now. The question is the following. So assume you are a supervisor, many of you are actually supervisors. Suppose that you have, in your jurisdiction, a local subsidiary of an international bank, you are relatively comfortable about the situation of the group as a whole, in terms of capital, liquidity, other parameters, but you have to decide what should be the regulatory approach as a host, as a host supervisor, what your approach in relation to regulatory requirements for the local subsidiary of this, of this group. So we have, we basically allow you to choose between three different options. First option is that since you are confident with the situation of the group as a whole, you can be more flexible in terms of requirements that you're going to impose on the local subsidiary. Second, that in any case, you will actually require the same requirements for the local subsidiary of international group as you will impose for domestic institutions. Third possibility is you, due to the complexity of the group or whatever, you will actually be more stringent with the local, local subsidiary of this international group as compared with domestic institutions. So what is your answer? Let me have three for six, just wait a little bit. Okay, so large majority of you have voted for the option, would imply same rules as for domestic entities, basically rein fencing. So that's, that's a fact. I mean, basically that people naturally tend to basically not disregard and not pay too much attention or to attach too much weight to the idea that the subsidiary of this international group, well, is part of a group, which is quite sound in terms of capital and liquidity, you will still prefer to impose the same requirements to the subsidiary you would impose for standalone, alone domestic institutions. So that provides, I think, a good introduction for our next round for the, for the, for the panelists. We see that sometimes regulatory divergence is not only about sort of heterogeneous implementation of the agreed international standards, but also has to do with, with sort of additional requirements which are imposed in different jurisdictions, or sometimes the extraterritoriality of the policies actually designed in that jurisdiction. Of course, good examples are first rein fencing, as we have, as we have discussed. Second example will be this idea of location requirements for the centralized clearing of transactions that could actually take place outside that particular, particular jurisdiction, right? So my question now to the panelists is basically, if you believe that those type of policies, rein fencing, extraterritoriality are simply unavoidable, so we have to live with them, have to learn to live with them, or whether you believe that there are alternatives which could deliver a more, say, sustainable type of outcomes, something that would be more friendly from the point of view of the integration, integration of international capital markets. So why don't we now start in the reverse order? So I will ask first Elisa to try to address this question.
Thank you. I, I think this is also an important topic, and it, it, it can evolve directly from this question that, that you have put to the, to the audience. And I think it's interesting that people have reacted in this sense. However, there is, there are other elements. Your question was, would you request more or less? But there are other elements that have got to be borne in mind when it comes to trans, trans-border, different countries' operations. And this relates to the other aspect that I mentioned before, that financial stability is a responsibility of the host country. Whereas financial stability is a responsibility of the host country, a lot of consequences derive from there. If you have a systemic subsidiary in your country, and if there is a problem in this bank, even if subsidiary is not the cause of the problem, but the problem is, is at the central level, then ultimately, you are, it's, it's your budget, your national budget that is supposed to pay for the cover deposits, which can be something major, particularly in those cases where the size of subsidiary is much bigger than the size of, of the country. So this is, this is really one of the issues. Then the easy solution is, okay, so make it a branch. But if it is a branch, then the oversight of the local supervisor is absolutely empty. You cannot see anything. And in particular, this is often associated with a lot of concentration of all the information in the mother company. And so the, a systemic branch is operating in the market, and what the audience was saying, the same rules, you don't have oversight of the operation of, of the branch. So this is, this is a very, very negative situation that occurs even inside banking union, because in banking union, rules are not different from this. And, and this is, this is really, this is really a problem. And so I, the other element is when things go wrong. And when things go wrong, another aspect that I think must be addressed is whether the resolution plan is a single-point event or multiple-point event, which means can the subsidiary or the branch stand alone and be cut away from the rest of the group if anything, everything goes wrong? Or instinctively, if anything goes really wrong, then you can, you can dry the subsidiary and the branch and use all your waivers because you are concentrating on minimizing the cost inside the institution. And this can have a very, very serious impact for the host country. So these dilemmas are the kind of issues that So these dilemmas are the kind of issues that have got to be addressed in a lot of detail before we move into some expectations that then become misunderstood in relation to certain types of ring fencing. I'm not discussing ring fencing of other origins in which you do ring fence because you don't want competition. I'm just trying to address ring fencing that is natural and that occurs for the fear that if something happens in a big operation in your country, you cannot afford to safeguard financial stability because even if in a branch, if you have the covered deposits, there are all the other deposits, there is the bail-in strategy. So probably we need to reinforce while we are in this medium-term situation, to reinforce the discussion and the dialogue between host and home so that trust is created and you end up with a kind of stable scenario for the worst case. And that's for the worst case that we have got to prepare ourselves because when everything is normal, everything was perfectly and there is no problem. Thank you.
Many thanks, Elisa. Wilson, do you have a view on this?
Of course you do.
So I'm going to go also a little bit from the host perspective here, but I'm going to take a different answer. And my answer is going to be very much premised on, first of all, having large amounts of private sector resources that make sure you don't get to the government taxpayer, that you've scaled up your going concern capital and your gone concern capital to where the risk of taxpayer support has become exceedingly remote. In my first remarks, my goal was to set out the problem and frankly, to scare you a little bit because I think this is a scary problem and I think it's an important problem. The nature of the problem, why are banks riskier in this format if you end up saying, I want to trap capital in each of my subsidiaries if the 40 or 45 of you who picked the same in the middle? Let's imagine a thought experiment where Fernando is the holding company and the rest of us are subsidiaries. And he's got a lot of capital, a lot of TLAC, he's safe, he could have, the worst traders of 2008 happened to work for him, but he's got so much capital that he can solve that with his new resources, thanks to Bill's work and the Basel III work, the Too Big to Fail work. Now, on that basis, let's call the risk of that institution 100. Now, I think, well, that's great. I feel pretty safe. I've got this huge amount of capital to group, but I can do even better if I say, you know what, I want exactly that same amount of resource in my country. I want 100% of my patch to be covered by the exact same local capital that won't be released. I could reduce my risk in that case by 80% or so mathematically. If you look at different types of parameters, if we're all about the same size subs, I can drive my risk down to 20 from 100. And that's kind of good. The only problem is all my friends on the panel here, their risks have gone up and the math we did roughly, they've doubled. So now you've got this little bit of a prisoner's dilemma problem. I've done something very rational for me and I've messed up the lives of the people to my left and right. Now, they're probably going to be smart enough to see this and say, I'm going to do the same thing. I better match Wilson's bad move. If they do that, they won't get all the way down to 20, they might get to 40 or 50, but the risk to the people who haven't moved yet goes up further. In the end game, if we all decide to trap capital, so there's no longer any reserve in the center of the room here, we've all trapped our own capital, and I think it's frankly very unlikely that we would agree to share capital in crisis if the houses of some of the world are already in fire. I'm not likely to be writing a lot of checks out of my jurisdiction. But if we all trap our capital, we've made the risk of that group something like five times bigger. Each one of us is a less diverse institution. There are six ways to fail now. And in fact, in most groups, if, say, Bill's group or Elisa's group fails, that failure is going to ripple through the other subsidiaries and we're going to get caught up. So when we ran the math of this, it increased the risk of banking by something like five to 15 times. So what to do about this? I think one thing, at least we should not go to the right-hand pillar, don't treat foreign banks worse than domestic ones if they've got large amounts of central resources. That is a safety net and you should try to figure out at least how to use that safety net, at least treat them fairly. But if you look at speeches like Randy Quarles' speech, Trust Everybody But Branded Cattle, he talks about the benefits of having at least some reserve in Fernando's seat, something where if the fire happens to be in Portugal or New York or somewhere else, that he's got a mobile reserve that he can move to where the fire is. That can reduce the risk of banking dramatically and get us out of this problem. Mark Carney's also spoken, I think, very well about this. He did a speech called "The High Road to a Responsible Open Financial System" that points to these same things. That the best answer for a bank with thick capital and thick Too Big to Fail for home and host is actually that left column. It's making the pre-placed capital, liquidity and TLAC a little bit less than the consolidated requirements in order to give Fernando some resource, some flexibility to move money where the problem is. So I think we can get there, but that's going to require some work because a lot of the architecture of Basel is about minimum requirements. And so if you say, well, my host requirement, I'm going to use this and gold plate, now Fernando's life gets worse and worse. Second point, if I may, don't balkanize branches. There's been a creeping subsidiarization of branches around the world. There is talk, Chairman Quarles talked about, actually, should we impose LCR on branches? I think this is a very delicate topic. I'm glad he said, let's not impose that unilaterally in the US, let's bring it to Basel, let's have an international discussion. Getting that right is going to be super important for the resilience of banks. If you start to trap liquidity, I think you have created a lot more risks for your future selves and I hope we can avoid that issue. Thank you.
Thanks. You have time, please.
Thanks. So I'll be brief, but so there are ring fencing concerns in the insurance sector as well with global insurance groups and speaking to our members, of course, some of the reasons that come up, I mean, ultimately, it comes down to the point again about trust. But reasons mentioned, same as Elisa, concerns about the effectiveness of cross-border Secondly, concerns about full, timely and consistent implementation of standards. So is my neighbor doing this in the same way that I am? I did want to mention as well perhaps a sort of insurance-specific issue where we talk about ring fencing. I think there's also the ring fencing of risk. And the issue that often comes up is the challenge of localization of reinsurance requirements, where there are sometimes regulatory requirements to reinsure risk in the domestic reinsurance sector, which is a sort of fungibility issue in terms of limiting the diversification of that risk around the globe. And often that has to do actually with slightly broader policy issues in particular. The usual reason is to look at development of the domestic insurance market for a range of policy issues. So what can be done? I think, really, what has been said about diving into the resolution issues is key, but also keeping up the push for consistent implementation. So perhaps as we are looking at greater focus on guidance, on interpretation of application of standards prior to them being implemented is one way. And then, of course, a lot of focus on the full implementation and so an increased focus on assessment of implementation. On this last point about localization of reinsurance, this is a big question. How do supervisors respond to the trade-off between supervisory goals and broader policy goals? And I think their focuses, our focus as a standard-setting body is likely to be to try and have a specific focus on highlighting what the potential trade-offs are and explaining the risks, not only for the solvency of individual insurers, but also what it might mean more broadly in terms of limitations on diversification, having knock-on effects for development of the local market and for financial stability in the local market. So in a way, just trying to make it a lot more acute and clear what the policy trade-offs are. Thank you.
Many thanks, Fernando. Please, Bill.
Fernando mentioned tomorrow's my last day as Secretary General. I miss a lot of things about my job. One of the things I'll miss most is debating with the industry. And over the years, I've had the opportunity, the good fortune of sitting on panels with Wilson and I'm always at a clear disadvantage. Very bright guy, really articulate. And so I, but I really have enjoyed these discussions. This particular discussion, let's face it, this is, for the moment, it's largely a theoretical, academic one. One of the things I do most these days, I spend a lot of time explaining to the industry, look, we've consulted, we've listened to your comments, we've done quantitative impact studies, in some cases on numerous occasions, let's get the rules in place. Any discussion about the impact of the rules before that, it's either lobbying or it's, you know, like I said, it's theoretical and it's academic. So a substantial part of the framework of the Basel Committee's work program over the next several years is to assess the impact of the reforms and that can only be based on data, analysis and actual results. I get, Wilson, you triggered me. I've been triggered, but when I hear about trapped pools of liquidity and capital, this is, I have flashbacks to 2007, 2008 and I had banks complaining, you know, because at that time, we were already starting to think about liquidity rules and the biggest complaint I heard, oh, there's going to be trapped pools of liquidity. As it turns out, I've had banks that have come to me after and they said, you know, we thought we had trapped pools in liquidity in certain jurisdictions. Boy, are we glad that they were trapped. Of course, we relied on them when there was a severe liquidity crunch. It's the same with capital, you know, capital is put aside, it's cash in a vault, it's not, that's not true. Capital, it's the way you fund yourself. This discussion about ring fencing and extraterritoriality, when we were working on the earlier phase of Basel III, this came up quite often and I was asked all the time, so, you know, if there are ring fencing provisions in the UK or in the US or elsewhere, what's the Basel Committee's view? The Basel Committee's view is jurisdictions have to do what they have to do. You can't, you as a central bank governor or responsible for supervisory functions in your jurisdiction, you can't abdicate your legal responsibilities, you have to worry about how things are done in your jurisdiction. I'm, from a Basel Committee perspective, I'm fine as long as the extraterritorial provisions don't impinge upon the Basel minimum requirements. Again, the minimum requirements. In all cases, we haven't seen that. Elisa, you also triggered me a little bit when you mentioned fine-tuning, but that's for a different reason, that was innocent. We hear quite a bit from the industry about, okay, the rules are in place, yeah, maybe they're not fully implemented yet, but, you know, let's have a discussion about fine-tuning, which I've grown to be cynical over the years. I guess that I perceive that or interpret that as code for, let's find ways to water down the rules. My point is this, let's get the rules in place. We've consulted, we've listened to the industry, we've done quantitative impact studies, let's give the rules a chance to work. And this is, I still have a debate with a lot of bankers and the trade associations about the leverage ratio and how the leverage ratio is a horrible idea, even though it's only, you know, from our perspective, a paltry 3%. Let's give the rules a chance to work. So that's my main message. The other thing on proportionality, this is a really important point. We're looking at this, there's a very healthy debate about proportionality, the proportion application of rules. It's not new. We've been discussing this for a long time. I've been asked, I've been asked often, what's my view? The US only applies Basel rules to the biggest banks, what about the other 5,000 or so community banks? From a global financial, a global stability question, I don't care. It's not the US that applies it just to the biggest banks or many other jurisdictions. The European Union does it a different way and I can fully appreciate the desire, have a single rulebook, a one-size-fits-all approach. In some cases, it doesn't, you know, it's square peg in a round hole, it's difficult to apply Basel rules to credit unions, savings banks and others. So there's an added necessity, there is an importance to having this ongoing discussion about proportionality. I could go on, but I will not. Thanks.
Thanks. Bill.
Yes, thank you. Let me start by putting an example of gaps that represent some kind of extraterritoriality and that can be, in my view, solved. For example, if you are a group based in Europe, the capital requirement regulation will require that additional tier-one instruments have to have some conversion triggers that need to be calculated in a very specific way that is explicit in the European regulation. Now, if you are a group that you, and you have this diversified group, a multiple-point-of-entry group, as the Spanish banks usually are, some of the issuance will not occur in Europe, will occur in the host country. And then you have a problem because you want to consolidate at a group level and the issuance will not consolidate at a group level because it doesn't meet the requirements of the directives in Europe. And this is a very simple example of how you can, by creating your own rules, create some extraterritoriality effects on the group. I think these are the kind of gaps that just by mutual understanding can be solved. And in fact, in this case, it seems, I've been told, that already basically has been either mitigated or solved. So it is now possible to make this kind of recognition of this as a tier-one. So I think there is a lot of things that can be done and should be done. We need processes that make sure that the different jurisdictions understand each other and the structure of the group so that this is done. So I think in terms of the issues of political will and trust that were mentioned from the beginning, I think we need to understand that there is, behind this, there is a fundamental asymmetry in the international relations. And it is that we have banks that are global, markets that are global, but mandates are local, mandates are national. When you are in trouble, when the domestic system is in trouble, when your parliament is asking for an inquiry or there is a judge that is investigating something, you are in serious issues. And for that, you need a very, very solid framework for cooperation. Cooperation cannot be based in just goodwill, it has to be based in solid frameworks. And I think that's what is, why is it so important to build this kind of very solid frameworks based on international agreements, et cetera? And I think more work needs to be done and can be done. I was reading, and in the papers that have been produced by Yosco and by the FSB, there are a lot of ideas. I think the question now is to see if we can put these ideas in something that is specifically helping to solve some of the problems. I think there is a lot of work that has been done in terms of these different tools, the possibility of saying that the determination of equivalence across different jurisdictions. I think there is a lot that can be done because at this very moment, this process is not good enough. It's a process that sometimes is too detailed, too different from country to country, too line by line, and it could be based on a kind of multi-agreement, multilateral agreement that could set the principles for something. I don't know, I've read the papers, I see many things that sound to me like this, but I'm not sure that this will be the end result of that. But I think, for example, this is But I think, for example, this is one area where, in practical terms, improving how these frameworks work, and being based on a multilateral, not just the horse trading of two jurisdictions fighting each other, or discussing each other about, but in a more principle-based, if you want, international, I think that is one solution, but that is one direction. And there are many. Frankly speaking, one of my, reading these papers, I think there are many of good ideas. The question is whether, whether the supervisor community is going to make possible to put these ideas in a specific frameworks that provide some solid basis for cooperation, so that people feel that they can really improve the cooperation and information sharing, et cetera, et cetera, among different jurisdictions. I'll stop here.
Paul, this looks as a question addressed to you there again.
Well, you know, as, as the only capital markets regulator on the panel, I take a, you know, not a completely dissimilar point of view, but I, I look at it as both a good news and bad news story. And the bad news is, and direct answer to the question that's in the, in the agenda, is whether issues around ring fencing and extraterritoriality are inevitable. I mean, are there any things we can avoid to do this? And I think the short answer is, these things will continue to exist. I don't think we're going to ever get away from these facts. But I do see there's a good, but I do think there's a good news story, and I'll come to that in a minute. So why do I say things like extraterritoriality or ring fencing are inevitable? And there's really two reasons for that, in my view. The first is what I call first-mover advantage, and the second is just the different perspectives that capital markets regulators bring to certain issues that banking regulators and prudential regulators do, even though the issues overlap. So let me, let me tell you what I mean by first-mover advantage. So if you look at what happened after the crisis in 2008, and the G20 came out with a series of recommendations about what to do. From a capital markets point of view, one of the things was around over-the-counter derivatives. We need to do better when it comes to over-counter derivatives. So the US passed the Dodd-Frank Act, the CFTC was first out of the gate passing numerous sets of rules with respect to what to do with over-the-counter derivatives. Other jurisdictions around the world took a little bit of extra time to look at what the G20 was saying, and then decided, okay, these are, this is how we are going to implement over-the-counter derivatives reforms, consistent with what the G20 said. So if you put yourself in the, in the shoes of the CFTC, for example, yes, they were first out of the gate, they came up with the first set of rules in response to what the G20 said, and because no other jurisdiction around the world moved as fast or as thoroughly as they did in the, in the amount of time that they did, clearly, they were saying, this has to be, this has to be the global rule. So if you impact the US investor, you must adhere to the CFTC rules. That's where the extraterritoriality came in. That's the bad news. The good news is, what you've now seen, you have conversations with representatives of the CFTC and others around the world, many jurisdictions, if not most of the major jurisdictions, have in place the reforms necessary to be consistent with what the G20 said, about what we need to do to make the over-the-counter derivatives markets safer. So what are you seeing now? You're now seeing these discussions around deference, around mutual recognition, around substituted compliance, at least with respect to things like trading venues, central counterparties, things along these lines, when it comes to the OTC derivatives. So to me, that's a good news, bad news. I think then about the issues of our perspective. So from a capital markets perspective, we have one view, prudential regulators have another view. And what I'm thinking there, what we have to be mindful of, is the discussions we're having around recovery and resilience and resolution of central counterparties. And if you look around the world, the resolution of entities fall into the prudential regulatory realm, whereas typically, recovery and resilience is often more in the capital markets regulator's perspective. But we have to be together in talking about what we're going to do, because the line between the recovery of a central counterparty and the resolution of a central counterparty is razor-thin. And if you're a resolution authority, you want as many assets available as possible. So you're going to try to ring fence as much as you possibly can, to be sure that if that CCP has to be resolved, you've got the assets to do it. From the capital markets perspective, I'm worried about resiliency and recovery. I want assets available to be sure that those CCPs are resilient and are able to recover. So you have a difference of perspective in terms of where you really look and how you address the very same issue. But there's good news on that side, too, because that's where I think the FSB has played a very substantial role, in bringing the various parties together to at least have the discussion. We don't agree all the time when we're having these discussions, but at least we're having the discussion, and trying to come to a mutual understanding about how we can be together. So yes, these issues are going to be with us, but I agree with Jaime, there are ways to mitigate, and that's why we should be having these discussions with our colleagues from around the world. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Again, a very rich exchange of views about this very important matter. I think that very clear to everyone, the different trade-offs involved, the relevance of the national responsibilities in different domains, relevance of the issue of trust, I think is obviously an important element here, for instance, in the case of ring fences, how to ensure resources needed at the subsidiary level are going to be there when needed, if actually those resources are not already now in the balance sheet of the subsidiary. It's a very big thing. But of course, I have heard a number of positive and optimistic statements in terms of how much progress we could make by improving the cooperation and the exchange of information between host and home supervisors, the issue of calibrating actually properly, the particular lack, I guess you have in mind, the calibration internal lack in particular. I heard about the issue of deference, how much progress we could actually make along those, those lines. So thank you very much for this. I think it's time now to ask our second question to the, to the audience, so please, go back to your smartphones. So this is about basically something we have already been discussing, what is the most effective response to excessive regulatory divergence? Of course, you could try actually, as to, to answer, three of them are important, but I wanted you to select, what is more important? Is it about more policy work, to be go beyond the standards which have been agreed after the great financial crisis, to make it, you know, to enlarge the scope of those standards, to make it more prescriptive, for instance, one option? Second option, no, I mean, let's focus on implementation, that will be enough, if we ensure timely, consistent, comprehensive implementation of all, of all the standards. Or why don't we just go and try actually to articulate better the deference procedures, so that we rely more on mutual recognition, or passporting, or this type of procedures? Okay, very interesting. So that, I think deference will make the trick, according to the majority, the majority of respondents to this, to this poll. So thank you, thank you very much. Before opening actually now the floor for Q and A's from the audience, do you want to react to this, Paul, or related issues? Yes, Wilson, please.
So Bill and I trigger each other from time to time, and I'm very sad this may be our last chance to trigger each other in quite the same way. But first, I do want to recognize, I think it's 20 years in Basel doing this, and I mean this very honestly, 20 years of public service, driving some very important reforms that I think make the world significantly better. I think it's very honorable service, I want to thank you very much for that, from my standpoint. We talked a little bit about academics in terms of understanding the problem of ring fencing, and that's often a way to talk to central bankers. I think it's helpful when you try and take a more framework perspective. Given the complexity of banking and all the things that are going on around the world, it's sometimes helpful to abstract from the problem. So I've tried to frame some of my work in resolution that way, and also some in discussion of fragmentation. But let me now take you to a more personal experience. I was head of risk for Credit Suisse in 2008, and it seemed like the world was on fire. It seemed like every weekend, stuff was happening, unexpected things. In my bank, in the bank across the street, in the bank across the world, in all kinds of jurisdictions, fires were lighting up around the world. We were lucky, we were one of the banks, and I hope it wasn't just luck, but we were one of the banks that got through on a, as a flight to quality bank, we did not need government assistance, and we worked our tails off to make sure that was the case. But it was a very difficult thing. If I think back to those days, one of the things that helped us get through it is, we had 20, 25 different businesses around the world. Yes, our US mortgage business was not exactly the happiest place to be, but we had good business in Japan, we had good business in Australia, we had private banking businesses, we had lots of diversity within the bank, and lots of different legal entities that could support each other. If I think back to all those day-to-day decisions, and think about trying to manage that in the world, of all the local regulations trapping permissions to move capital liquidity around the world, I don't know how many banks would have gotten through, I bet you would have seen a lot more failures. That's a practical thing that I feel in my bones. The reason I take an academic approach is, if I came up here and said, I feel this in my bones, I'm not sure anybody takes me seriously. No, they don't feel my bones. So I wanted to frame it more academically, but I think if you rerun that movie, that is, that is one of the hurdles that we didn't have to come across in 2008, that I think in today's world would make it much harder. Now, we have the benefit of a lot of these core Basel III reforms, the too-big-to-fail reforms. The question to me is, how do we build on those to build the smartest home host system? We could say, oh, just let it work. I am too cynical after 2008 to just take things on faith. If I see a problem, I think it's my duty to speak up about it, I think it might be malpractice to be quiet, and if that's lobbying, I'm guilty. So I think it's important that you don't judge it just because you heard it from me, but that you judge things on the quality of the argument, the quality of the logic, and I'd be happy to share with you, whether it's an academic or a practical view, why I think this issue is so important. I have some other thoughts, but I'll leave, I'll leave it there for now.
Yes, Alyssa, please.
Well, I, I would just like to react because I, well, we have not known each other for so long, but anyway, we have had some discussions in past years, but, but nevertheless, I take your point, I can see, I can see perfectly what is the target, and I recognize the reason behind it. Nevertheless, please don't forget, and by classifying is that academic thing, I want to share with you and with the audience, a small example of something that already passed, and so I can share it, the case of Popular. Popular was, nobody was expecting Popular to fail. And Popular had a small, small subsidiary, by the eyes of Popular, very small, in my country, in Portugal. And when, when Popular went into crisis, all of a sudden, there was this, and it was, it started with a liquidity problem, and so if liquidity was taken away from subsidiary, or if Santander would not want to buy the subsidiary and wanted to cut it away, it might be logic, then what would happen is that the taxpayers, Portuguese taxpayers, would have to pay 2 billion just for the covered deposits, and almost 5 billion if we take other deposits, and deposits from small and medium enterprises. So this may be a small, a small amount for a lot of you, even for your bank, but for a country that was in the process of getting out of macroeconomic problems, this would have been a disaster. So it's not an academic issue, it's a very practical issue. And this goes into what, I think it was Fernando that said, that of course, this relationship between home and host, and Portugal is usually a home, but sometimes is a host, so we can, we have the two experiences, but in relation to the, the relationship between the home and host has got to be based on some very clear grounds, and it is important that there is some common rulebook behind it, so that the relative powers are not exercised in the negotiation and in the middle of a crisis. And of course, I take your example, but when we started addressing these issues, it was, the problem was too big to fail, and it was here, BIS, that defined, and also the IMF, but that its size, its opacity, and its connectivity. So too big to fail is too big, too big to supervise, and even more difficult to resolve. So I mean, the, the local impact of what, of what, of what is resolution strategy for a bank is, is not foreseen with such certainty as sometimes academically, we imagine it would be. So my, 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 my claim here is not, is not to say, okay, let's ring fence, don't take me wrong. What I'm saying is that, on the other hand, this is not such a simple problem, that, okay, let's, let's accept waivers on liquidity, accept waivers on capital, because it makes all sense. I mean, there is another argument from the other side, and we have got reinforced the dialogue, but recognizing the different angles of the problem, that's, that's my, my appeal here, and not, not anything else.
Thanks. Can you mark here? Jonathan, just please.
Yes, and, and just very briefly, and to, to turn, change the subject somewhat, maybe pick up on the last question, which I thought was very interesting, the emphasis on deference. But the, the one thing I wanted to pick up on was the comment from Jaime about the possibility of multilateral deference approaches, and, and maybe emphasize that, you know, what I, what I mentioned earlier, in a, in a way, perhaps, what we're going to be going through with the IIS on our, on our insurance capital standard, will be almost a sort of pilot, in a way, for a multilateral approach, because it will be the IIS that will be considering whether the, whether the US approach is, is giving comparable outcomes. In other words, you know, is it equivalency? So as opposed to many bilateral discussions, this will be, I'm not sure if it's been done before, that a standard-setting body is, is entering into these, this kind of assessment. So certainly, we'll be looking to, to partner with those around the table on, on, on thinking through some of these, these challenges, particularly, I think, when we talk about comparable outcomes, the definition of, what is a comparable outcome is going to be, is going to be a big challenge, and welcome debate on that.
I think when to now, Paul, to start the last round of remarks.
Well, let me address, if I can, maybe briefly Jacob's question, because the others are a little bit out of my realm, I would say, and then the last comment. I can tell you, from my perspective, when I'm talking about issues of trust, I'm really talking a little bit about both, in terms of the integrity of the system, but also the people. I think in the example that I gave with respect to what we did after the crisis with respect to the over-the-counter derivatives markets, that was really more a question of the system, the integrity of the system, that the CFTC, as an example, didn't have trust in the integrity of what other regulators were doing around the world until fairly recently, once all of those reforms were now put in place. But at the same time, you also have to look at the quality of the people. I don't think you can really divorce the two necessarily, because you could have the best system in the world, but if you don't have the right people with the capacity to implement what was agreed, the system really will fail. I would also say, in, in terms of your question with respect to the, the issue around capital markets and convergence, it's an interesting one for us at IOSCO, because we spend a lot of time dealing with our growth in emerging markets countries. And what's the first issue on their agenda, by and large? It's about capital market development. They're worried about creating the market that has the capacity to absorb the shocks that are there. Right now, they don't have that. They are dependent on the banking system. So while IOSCO itself doesn't have a capital markets development objective, 70 to 80% of our members do. And that's why we spend a fair amount of time looking at these issues in a way to try to help and assist these regulators around the world. So we recognize the problem, but it's not an easy solution.
Thanks, Jaime.
Thank you. I think that this fundamental asymmetry of having the global institutions, global I think that this fundamental asymmetry of having the global institutions, global markets, and having domestic mandates is not going to disappear. So we are going to be facing this kind of issues for a very long time, and I think work can be done, and needs to be done, in creating this sound frameworks of cooperation that back up this kind of cooperation. So I think, I think on that, probably, we all agree, we need to find what are the best ways to solve it. Terms of the business models that we have discussed, I think, in the case of the Spanish banks that I was presenting, that they have a business model of a more decentralized business model, in which each subsidiary manages their own liquidity and capital, although the overall company have policies, frameworks, systems, et cetera, it's a corporate decision, supported by the supervisor. Frankly speaking, I was supervisor at the end of the '90s, and I don't know who started. I don't know if it was the supervisor who asked that, or the banks who asked this, wanted this philosophy. What I can tell you is that at that point of time, when I was in charge of supervision, both were in agreement, that day was the right model. It may be endogenous. It may be endogenous. If we would live in a different world, I think perhaps the approach would be different. And again, I don't think it is a solution for all kinds of models. I feel that this should not be imposed by regulation. I think this should be a corporate choice, and in other cases, it may be not the best approach. And therefore, to find solutions to the problems, and we have not found the solutions to some of these problems, need to be found. And multiple point-of-entry, there are not that many institutions, it's not well-understood, probably, but I think it's a valid, very perfectly valid system. Single point-of-entry has other problems, and I think probably, understanding each other, and understanding home host, I think there is a lot of work that needs to be done in this, frankly speaking, on this area. I would sympathize that in a banking union, we should be more requiring much more, and I don't know exactly to what level, because still, the problems are there, but I certainly sympathize enormously with this statement. Just finish, that, I'm sorry. I mean, it's the last word, but I think we have talked about the past, but we should be talking about the future, and the future is much worse. Sorry, but, no, 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 but sorry, but the divergence, when we talk about the digital problems that are coming, these divergences are absolutely huge, and the necessity of looking for a common framework in information, in digital sharing, information sharing, protection of data, competition, I mean, this is huge. And I know that there is work going on, but things move more, really faster. I mean, you can see what is, what all the issues that have created, just Facebook announcing that they are creating Libra. So, I mean, there is a need for a framework, and yes, we have spent, I know that this would require several hours, and, no, several days, or years, I don't know, but I really, if the question is what supervisors need to do, I think they need to move faster in this area. And just, I will finish. Please read the chapter that the BIS has produced on this. I think it's quite interesting, starting to, from a conceptual point of view, on different axes, what they call the new compass of regulation. I think it's quite an interesting idea when they mix financial stability, competitiveness, competition, with the data regulation. I think there is something there, but I think if this is the question, the need to move faster is very clear, and I will stop here. Sorry for that.
This commentary, I can assure you, is not paid.
Yes. I'm glad you made your final intervention. It's a perfect segue into what I was going to say, which is, all this, all this talk about regulation and regulatory convergence, my concern there is, it serves as such a distraction from really more important issues. The Basel Committee is finally, you know, I like to remind people, we are, the Basel Committee on Bank Supervision, not regulation. That's, our raison d'etre was to bring supervisors together, and we are now moving in that direction. And this focus, this incessant obsession with rules is not healthy, because it distracts from things like, thinking about fintech, cyber risk, operational resilience more broadly, we're doing work on stress testing, risk data and risk reporting, and the list goes on. So within the Basel Committee, we really have made the pivot away from regulation, still focus on implementation, but we're thinking about ways, and it sounds so trite and cliché to say, "We need more supervisory cooperation, communication, collaboration, coordination," all those things, but they're so essential. And with apologies to Steve Chiketti, because I use this metaphor all the time. Steve said, way back when, he was the head of the economics department here at the BIS, and he said, he used the metaphor of the regulations, where Basel III is like a speed limit, but the speed limit is irrelevant unless it's enforced, and you need supervisors, you need people to enforce. First of all, you have to put the rules in place, that's implementation, the speed limit has got to be in place, you've got to have supervisors enforcing the speed limits. So this, it is gratifying that a lot of the questions we just heard are about trust, because that's something that was, you know, that needs to be restored, trust in banks, trust in financial systems, trust in the work that we do, and I think, you know, I think we still have a long way to go. Mr. Franklin, your question about is that people are systemed. I think from my perspective, it is both, as Paul said, but it's mainly for us, it's about people, and restoring that trust in the counterparts across the border, and this home host question, this is an age-old question, supervision. It's a difficult one, because you can't have a rule, you can't just set out a rule or a regulation to say, "This is exactly how it's going to work," particularly in times of stress, because we don't know how things are going to work in times of stress. Finally, the question on resilience, this is a really good question. What does resilience mean? Never fail? I don't think most, I think there are going to be failures, you can't avoid that. It's mainly about making banks and banking systems, financial systems, better, have the better ability to withstand the inevitable pressures that come their way. Thanks, I'll leave it at that.
Well, I'll save time, so just one statement, really, which is to pick up on what's been said. I think we've, to add about the future focus, and we talked about technology, cyber, climate risk, and we've talked a lot today about cross-jurisdictional regulatory convergence issues. I just wondered, maybe as a last comment to flag, that I do think going forward on this new agenda, it's also going to be about cross-sectoral regulatory convergence, because these are all topics which are cross-cutting, and we are, so absolutely, to Bill's point, it is going to mean a lot more coordination, also, across standard-setting bodies with the FSB, and maybe this is an opportunity on that point, and Bill's last official occasion, to say my very big thank you on this topic of coordination and collaboration. It's been, Bill has been very welcoming to me as a new secretary general, and in the, and this has been a model of cross-sectoral coordination, so, going to miss you, Bill.
I'd like to address the last question first. When you look at the things that Draghi talked about in terms of what makes the US market kind of this unusually resilient financial system, and it's helped it bounce back more quickly, he cites capital markets, but also the fact that we've gotten rid of statewide banking in favor of a more national, of very big diversity of economies. I'm giving away my age here, but when I started, you couldn't bank outside a state in Texas, they wouldn't let those Yankee banks anywhere near the border. You couldn't bank outside your county in Georgia, and you couldn't bank outside a building in Illinois. Right? That's why some of those bank buildings were so huge in Chicago, is because you needed one, because all your people had to be in that building. So building that diversity, in those years, by the way, you did have big state recessions that were nasty. The Texas Recession '86 that ended up breaking the state controls on banking was a nasty doom loop in our southern member state that got out of control. You know, the oil patch went down, real estate went down, the banks started going down, and that fed on each other. It was, it was a bad circumstance. So for smaller economies to try and wall that off, I think it does create these doom loop problems, and I think Europe, right now, has fragmented into having some of those issues. The broader questions talk about how to create trust. Elisa talked about the problem of Banco Popular. That was a bank that had no liquidity, as best I can tell, on Tuesday night. It had no TLAC, no credible recovery and resolution plan. It was just a disaster. Thankfully, for Santander was there, but without Santander, I think it would have been, we wouldn't be talking about this as the successful test of the single resolution function in Europe, we would be talking about this as a big problem. So you need to presuppose serious resources, some of which will have to be pre-placed. I'm not arguing for zero resources, I'm not a, if we take our Fernando-led bank, I'm not presuming that he is always going to be an angel. He's a good guy, but I don't, you know, in times of stress, people behave difficult. So I want to make sure that regardless of what Fernando is in that seat, that Elisa doesn't get stuck with a multi-billion dollar problem in her home state. So how do you build that? You could say, "Pre-place it all," that way you don't have to trust them at all, but then you run into this problem that Draghi identified, of having a very balkanized system that doesn't absorb shocks well and does not service its citizens. And as all of you who've dedicated your lives to public service, see, that's not a good answer either. I think there is a balance, that if you pre-place enough liquidity, and enough capital, and enough TLAC, not 100% ring fencing, but something significantly greater than zero, you can get to a good balance of those that actually outperforms either of those extremes. You have enough skin in the game, so whether Fernando was in a good mood, or he's taken over by an evil alien, either one of those cases, it'll be in his interest to make sure that he's got enough invested in Elisa's subsidiary, that even if he's in a bad mood, it's in his interest to make sure that she doesn't suffer a local loss. So I think you can build that type of system. It does require a little bit of balance and some engineering.
Oh, well, I'd start by the question of Mr. Franklin. You have said the question between people or institutions, what is the reason for trust? I would add two other aspects, because I think in your question, both of them are important. But to be very, being very honest, and trying to address the sources of trust or lack of it, I would select also relative powers and hierarchy of priorities, because that's not settled. You have got to do that at the moment. So those things are very important as well. In relation to what is resilience, and the resilience of the system, I think what brings resilience to the system is previsibility, and that you run a risk that you can understand, and that you are willing to accept in exchange of a reward. And when things get out of this spectrum, you have all sorts of instability, and that is what supervisors don't want, inclusive bank runs. And the element that is more critical, because people are less informed, are less knowledgeable, is deposits. So if you touch a deposit, I think we have a bank run. So wherever it is, provided it is in the same jurisdiction. So one of the aspects that I would add to your description of the United States is the existence since the beginning of the FDIC. That is a very, very important element, and here I move to your question, and your question, you said, there is a single, in banking union, there is a single supervision, there is a single rulebook, there is a single resolution authority, and, yes, you didn't mention, there is a single guarantee of deposits. You avoided it. And that is missing, and that is not a minor thing, because that's the whole thing, if everything goes wrong, it may be symbolic. If we trust, as Wilson was saying, that with TLAC and MREL, you'll never touch it, but it is a very, very important symbolic source of trust for people. So whereas we don't finish it, we are stuck in the middle, and we are not in a banking union, we are in a two-pillar, in a two-pillar system, that was not what was agreed when we started with, and that is very, very relevant from my point of view, and I think it's really a very serious thing. And when you mentioned the example, which is very, very clear and very enlightening, of managing the water for a fire, and I, in a previous life, I also had competencies in environment, and sometimes, and this is the crucial thing, sometimes when you have a pot of water and you have a big fire, you have got to let burn parts of the system, and concentrate your efforts on one of them. So using your example, that's the problem, because this can burn somewhere else, and then who answers for it? That goes back, it's a very good example, I will use it from now onwards, if you allow me. On the future, I think it's very important that we address this issue of new competitors, because profitability in the banking system is not that big in general. The cost of capital is increasing with all, in part with adequate and right regulation, but the most profitable part of the business, or parts of it, is being absorbed by newcomers that don't comply with same rules. And this can be an extra danger, and I think we have got to address it very, very urgently, as Jaime mentioned. And I finish with a big, big thank you, not only for this session, but because the work done by the BIS has been absolutely major in the world and in what we are doing, and I speak with the knowledge, because for 12 years, I was in a European co-legislator or rulemaking, and I know how important and inspiring your work was for what has been done. So thank you very much to the institution, and to the people that make it, going back to Franklin's question, is it people or institutions in these cases, both? Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Elisa, I'm in a very good mood, Wilson, by the way. Basically, it has been incredibly interesting, I think, discussion, plenty of insightful comments, I think it was, certainly, we have achieved our objectives. If I may say, I think probably the degree of agreement, more or less agreement between panelists, has been probably both what we expected when we organized this meeting. I mean, there is, which sometimes is bad news, but today, I think, it has proven quite helpful. I think people basically agree, obviously, on the importance, complexity of the issue, but also about the targets to be achieved. Also, that the current situation is not fully satisfactory, although the degree of dissatisfaction may not be completely homogeneous across panelists, in terms of the obstacles, economic, the political obstacles. And I have heard some of you praising the reports recently published by the Financial Stability Board, that could be a good basis, actually, to continue working on these important matters. So probably, there is scope to organize a similar session on this matter, maybe a couple of years from now, and see how is the situation then, whether we have made some progress, or whether, regrettably, Jaime is right, and the technology has been so disruptive, that we have to start the whole thing from scratch. So thank you very much again to all of you, thank you very much for your interventions in this panel, and thank you very much, the audience, for attending this session. So with that, let me thank you all.